Bill, if we get our roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Present.
Mr. McCarthy.
Present.
Mr. Mansell.
Present.
Mr. Radka.
Present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Zoldan.
Here.
Mr. Reader.
Present.
Mr. Klein.
Present.
Commissioner George Evans.
Here.
Mr. Paul Dutton.
Present.
Police Chief Brent Milam.
Here.
Fire Chief Travis Beethan.
Here.
Planning and zoning economic development Dave Harrison.
Present.
Parks, buildings, grounds, and street construction Dale Grimm. Recreation Marty Gibson. Board of Public Affairs.
Present.
Mr. Engineer Chris Scaglione.
Present.
On the agenda, motion excuse Mr. Grimm and Marty, they both asked to be excused this evening. Move. Move by Radka, second Zoldan, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertaining motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Move by McCarthy, second.
Second.
Second by Sullivan, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertaining motion for disposal of the minutes, the regular meeting held July fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. So moved. Move by Mansell, second.
Second, Mr. Reed.
Second by Reader, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any other bills, Mr. Mansell?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we separate the bills into two separate voting votes, one by roll call and one by the normal vote. The bills that I want separated out for the roll call vote will start with bill number two, bill number twelve, bill number sixteen, bill number twenty-two, bill number twenty-five, bill number thirty, bill number thirty-two, bill number thirty-three, bill number thirty-seven, bill number thirty-eight. On the second page will be bill number one, bill number three, bill number ten, bill number thirteen, bill number sixteen, bill number nineteen, and bill number twenty-two. A total of seventeen bills can be voted on by roll call.
Any motion by Mr. Mansell for those bills, is there a second to those bills?
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Comments, roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy.
Abstain.
Mr. Radka.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Mansell.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan.
Yeah, on the advice of our village's Mr. Paul Dutton, I will abstain.
Okay, four ayes, two abstentions, those bills are paid, is there a motion to pay the rest of the bills? So moved. Move by Mansell, second.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Reader, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, I have some park appointments everybody should have had in their boxes for Marty for the fall rec program. Also, I've got a renewal, all the liquor licenses in the village expire on the first of October. And I have not heard of any complaints or anything where we would not want to renew any of those permits which are out there. Council has any concerns or you have any problems, do you have any?
I have none.
So I wanted to let you know that, you know, we do have a right to challenge them, but we haven't had any problems. And also, I did get in the mail our gas aggregation agreement for the next two years from Integris. And there will be an article in the newsletter about that. That's it for the mayor's report, is there a court's report to see?
No report, Mayor.
Solicitor's report?
No report.
Treasurer's report?
No report.
Board of Trustees and the public affairs report?
Our regular meeting will be next Thursday at four o'clock here.
Okay, thank you, John, any questions, you're gone. Okay, village engineers report?
I've provided a report to the council, does everybody have one? I'm not going to go into anything specific on it, there's no pressing dates on it. Are there any questions?
Any other comments?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Real special force, police chief, no harm.
I submitted my monthly report for July, is there any question, if you have any?
Any questions for Brown? Okay, fire chief Easton?
No report.
Any questions for Travis?
Is the grant still out there in La La Land?
Still in La La Land, doesn't understand anything, hasn't been denied yet.
Okay, planning and zoning administrator, director of economic development, Mr. Harrison.
My report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Dave?
I do.
Yes.
I don't know whether I should take that speaker apart. I'll start it, there's one more speaker, I will go. I gotta tell you something, Mr. Harrison, I'm looking at what you've done this last month. Three pages full of stuff. You gotta give me credit, real one there. But the one that I looked at on second page, if you guys have it on you, is the one, two, three, four, the fifth check. And it says, and I quote, "I have submitted the required quarter report to the state as regards to the wind turbines. The two turbines generated approximately eighty-three dollars and ten cents of electricity in the second quarter. A quarter is usually three months, but correct on that. So that means we made less than thirty dollars a month on those wind turbines." If my math is right. Well, I would say we got subpaid on these turbines. Our shares, I think they pay about ten percent of that.
You shouldn't be speaking.
You could take back what you have.
We paid thirteen thousand. The issue is the C I O, we have to fix it.
And those more solicitors, do us a favor, go to the microphone.
No problem, that's why I asked.
Thank you. Thank you, Stanley.
No problem. That's why I asked first, because I didn't know. They, the, uh... One thing you need to understand something, I'm not suing the turbines, so... But it's what solicitor wants, no problem. What I would like to see is this here, since we only getting thirty dollars a month from these turbines, and I'm not going to sit here and blame you, or me, or her, or them, or this or that. I'd like to get this, this council has gotten a lot of things accomplished. We really have, and they're in the council, we've worked together on a lot of things. I would like to see authorization, I like at the end, I'd like to make a motion that the solicitor sends a letter to the turbine company and great courtney and find out, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant from, I thought it was federal government, it's state or federal.
Both.
Both, oh, it was both. We got that grant from them, and we were supposed to get, I heard, three, five hundred, a thousand a month. I got that, I was true, I really don't even know what the amount is, we've got so many amounts. But I thought it was around five hundred a month. From five hundred a month down to thirty dollars a month, there's something wrong. And I would like this council to authorize the solicitor to send a letter to them and question the Winston Turbines Company and great courtney come up to here and find out what the problem is, if not, pay our money back. But they, the company can't keep going on telling them you're going to get this kind of money, that's pride. That could possibly be pride. I'm not here to say who's right or who's wrong. I'm here to get this straightened out. And this council and mayor, we've got a lot, and I'll say it to all of us, we've got a lot of stuff accomplished. We had to pay the price, I think John McCarthy said it the best. When we make a mistake, we pay for it. Somebody else makes a mistake, we pay for it. And that will be go down in history. You don't really leave office, John, and I don't really mind you whatever, what you said. But it's something, this council and the mayor, we should all stick together, find out why we're not getting that promised. From five hundred dollars a month down to thirty dollars, less than thirty dollars a month. There's something wrong. And so at the end, at the end, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, you can do that under new business, Stanley.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for your report, Dave? Okay, any questions for Dave? Mr. Grimm's not here, Mr. Marty is not here. Bill, do we have any correspondence to see?
We have correspondence.
Hey, are there any public remarks? If you'd like to make a public remark after I acknowledge you, please put in a microphone and give your name and address so we can get a record in a minute correctly.
Hi, I'm Robin Patton, the First Energy, I'm the area manager for Turnbull County. And again, I'm your direct contact, should you have any issues or concerns with Ohio Edison and First Energy. A couple of things, I wanted to invite the mayor, all of council, and the department heads out to our War and Service Center on October ninth for a meeting at four thirty. We're going to, we're going to learn about our storm restoration process, which will be very important as you work with your residents. As we get closer to that date, and I'll send out the formal invitation. And I also passed some flyers here, it talks about our energy conservation kits. And this is for all residents, they're available for all residents. They can either order them online, or they can call in and get them. But it's a kit that'll come through the mail, and you've got some CFL lights in there, some LED nightlights, there's a furnace whistle, and then also a smart strip and a surge protector. I've got some of these for you here. Then I guess the last thing, I'm just here to see if you've got any issues or concerns for me.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Are there going to be any other programs, I know there have been some in the past, I'm not sure whether they've been for governmental or business, where if we go through and revamp our lighting for high efficiency lighting, is there any programs would be available for that?
It's still out there, the program is still out there.
Is it?
And you would go to www.energysave-ohio.com and set up, and you'll see there's energy efficiency programs for both residential and commercial, which the village would fall into that. But then you can go through, and it talks about, it's for lighting, HVACs, I mean, depending on what type of things you're doing, what kind of construction or what you're doing. But it'll, you basically have to get it approved, the project's approved before you go out and buy. I know we did the same thing with the traffic city, so...
Traffic lights, but I'm kind of looking at all our buildings which have older lighting and everything like that. If there's a program where we can get a replacement fraction of the normal cost, you know, I think that's something we might want to look at this year.
It's a rebate, so it'll be a rebate program, you get the money afterwards. But you go through and you put in the, what you're going to put in, and you have to have savings, you have to show savings on these lights, and you get back how much you get back.
Hey, any other questions for Robin? Thanks for coming this evening, appreciate it.
I'm Sharon March, fifty-two, fifty-three, Pomarose. I just had a question. I heard the mayor says that this clock thing was coming in tonight as an emergency. And I thought, I was at two meetings, and I thought it was just in the works, that it wasn't going to be something that was rushed. And there was more things involved beyond the clock, which would make it, what is it, twenty-five, it has to be finished?
Okay, well, from what I was told, Mr. Sullivan came through his committee, and he had said we'd like to get it in before winter. And in talking with the clock company, you know, I had some dialogue with them, and they said, we get it passed this evening, we could have that in by five or six weeks. Mr. Grimm will be doing, he's not here this evening, he's going to be doing the foundation. And as far as putting a plaza area or something like that, that'll be taken up another time.
Okay, and I mean, at the same time, I think they were discussing something about a police truck or something. There's no money in the funds for that, but there's money for twenty-two thousand for a clock.
I don't know what you're talking about for a police truck.
Well, maybe it was a joke at the meeting.
It may have been a joke.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Because it wasn't really addressed, it says it's turned down.
But when you were at the meeting, when we talked about the clock, there was a second motion saying that we would like Dave Harrison to get a hold of an architect.
Right.
Design.
Right.
Corner. But I guess that they're going to put the clock in and then design around it, I...
Because I thought we weren't in a hurry for this, you know. I can't understand why it has to be done by the apocytal best.
Well, there's no reason, but there's a consensus, the council, and...
Okay, well, I didn't see it at that meeting, but I must have missed something. I do miss things.
Thank you. Are there any other public remarks at this time? During none, are there any council remarks this time?
Mayor, I'll be making a couple of motions under your business tonight.
Okay, any other council remarks? During none, committee reports, finance, Mr. McCarthy.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for John? Public parks, buildings, grounds, general improvement, and recreation, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, first of all, Thursday's our last concert at the park. Hope you all attend, attendance has been picking up, and we've had some great bands, so we hope to see you there. And we have two pieces of legislation, one for the fall program for recreation, and the other for the clock, and we'd like to see those passed emergency.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, public safety and welfare, Mr. Radka.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Mayor, just to, like Mr. Sullivan said, we're still under running for our grants for the fire department. And also, we have a piece of legislation on tonight, if you want to go first reading.
Is it? Okay, any questions for Ron? Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Mansell.
Yes, Mayor, usually I'll let Mr. Grimm give most of the reports for this committee, but since he's absent, I'll give a short one. The twenty thirteen, he told us the other day, the twenty thirteen street paving is completed. Tonight, one of the motions I'm going to be making is for the striping of the highways and stuff. And also, he advised us, and Mr. Harrison can verify this, maybe a little better if I mess this up, there's also additional rumor, road agreements taking place right now where we're going to get some more highways paved. Correct?
That's correct.
All right, which is a plus.
Yes, it is.
I just seen him up on Yurkey Young surveying, is that what that's about, or?
I don't, the surveyor's probably, it could be, Mr. Sullivan. The county commissioner signed the road use maintenance agreement with Halcombe for Highland Avenue from Halke Young to Yurkey Young, and Yurkey Young to the well pad. And I believe Dale has already negotiated with Halcombe to get the rest of Yurkey Young paved instead of just to the well pad.
Where is the well pad going?
Lining property.
I know, just duck across from where that old building is.
If you go just past the house on the left-hand side, you'll see where there's a little entrance way right there where they have two stakes where you, they're going to have the driveway put in there.
There's an old camper, Mike, on the south side of the road is pretty much across from that old camper.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They have, there's two wooden stakes with ribbons on it marking the entrance.
So they're going to, Dale's trying to get, to do from there to the county line, right?
And they're going to do that. Dale has that in the works already, so he's got that, so that way we don't have a short stretch which still has the chip and seal on it. Okay, any other questions for John? Public utilities, Mr. Low.
The only, excuse me, the only one we have is the off and the plate. And we'd like to have that emergency, because it's time to get that started.
Any questions for Stanley? Okay, transportation, Mr. Reader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a small report. Nothing real big is happening on the transportation, but we're still continuing our weekly trips and everything, so everything's pretty quiet. We still haven't heard, I know Mr. Harrison is still waiting to hear about the from the person from the C I C, you know, regarding the title change and everything, so... That's all, thank you.
Okay, any questions for John? Okay, Bill, if we get our first piece of legislation, please.
The ordinance committee for emergency passage. An ordinance amending restating ordinance number seventy-eight, two thousand eleven, to reengage agents of Fritz, S. Barnes, the service prosecutor of the village of Lordstown on November first, two thousand thirteen, to October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and to declare an emergency.
Okay, any comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
If you want, just a moment, please. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Sullivan, suspend the rules, there's a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Mr. Radka. Roll call, please. Mr. Zoldan.
I must abstain according to our system.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mr. Mansell.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Radka.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Five ayes, one abstention, motion carries to suspend the rules, their motion to adopt? Move by Mansell, second by Reader, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
I abstain.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Five ayes, one abstention, motion carries to pass, this is ordinance fifty-three, two thousand thirteen. Next, please.
The council's a hold for emergency passage. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number thirteen, two thousand and five, to re-implement section thirty-seven, thirty-five point six five through thirty-seven, thirty-five point seventy of the Ohio Advice Code, establishing and describing revised batteries in the community reinvestment area, designating a housing officer, creating a community reinvestment area housing council, and a tax incentive review council in the village of Lordstown, and to declare an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
During none, I declare this ordinance, it's had its second reading, next, please. The finance committee for emergency passage. An ordinance repealing the ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand thirteen, authorizing a transfer of some of twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents from the general fund into the unclaimed money fund pursuant to ordinance thirty-nine, ninety-nine, and to declare an emergency.
And any comments or motions on this piece of legislation? Motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Mansell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zoldan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to suspend the rules, their motion to adopt? So moved. Move by McCarthy, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to adopt, this is ordinance fifty-four, two thousand thirteen. Next, please.
From Parks, Buildings, and Grounds, General Improvements, Recreation Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance granting various seasonal park time employment positions for the fall two thousand thirteen recreation program, setting wages for the same, and to declare an emergency.
Are there any comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Motion by Sullivan, suspend the rules, there are a second?
Second.
Second by Reader? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to suspend the rules, their motion to adopt? Move by Radka, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to adopt, ordinance fifty-five, two thousand thirteen. Next, please.
From Parks, Buildings, and Grounds, General Improvements, Recreation Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance authorizing the village of Lordstown to purchase a street clock from the Burn Company, four, 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 Reading Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four, five, two, oh, two, and to declare an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Move to suspend the rules.
Motion by Sullivan, suspend the rules, there are a second?
Second.
Second by Zoldan, roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to suspend the rules, their motion to adopt? So moved. Move by McCarthy, second?
Second.
Second by Zoldan, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to adopt, ordinance fifty-six, two thousand thirteen. Next, please.
The safety committee for emergency passage. An ordinance authorizing purchase of one new two thousand and fourteen Chevrolet Impala model sedan, leaseholder vehicle through the Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from Taylor Chevrolet, twenty-five-ten, North and Whale Drive, Lancaster, Ohio, four-three-one-three-zero, and to declare an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we amend the ordinance, there's a typo. The year of the vehicle should be a twenty thirteen instead of a twenty fourteen.
Okay, motion to amend by Mr. Radka, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Zoldan?
Yeah, and it points at ordinance.
Okay.
And section, on the heading, and then also in section one.
The motion by Radka, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sullivan?
Already had a second, that's all.
Yeah, but they have, they have abstained on that. Yes, they only have abstained on that, so motion by Radka to amend, second by Sullivan. Comments? We are roll call on this one.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
I abstain according to the solicitor.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Five ayes, one abstention, motion carries to amend, are there any comments or motions on this piece of legislation? During none, I declare it's had its first reading. Next, please.
The finance committee for emergency passage. An ordinance authorizing the clerk to make all necessary revisions to the revenue and appropriation budget pursuant to the amended certificate dated August second, two thousand thirteen, and to declare an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rule.
Motion by McCarthy, suspend the rules, there are a second?
Second.
Second by Mansell, roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carries to suspend the rules, their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Reader, second?
Second.
Second by Radka. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nades. Motion carries to adopt. Ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand thirteen. Next, please.
The utilities committee for emergency passage. An ordinance accepting the proposal of utility contracting to extend the sanitary sewer service to the Blakenhoff and residential properties situated along Todd Avenue, State Route forty-five. Such proposal being the most responsive, most and best proposal, and declare an emergency.
Comments or motion on this piece of legislation?
You make the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Zoldan to suspend the rules. There are second?
Second.
Second by Mansell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nades. Motion carries to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt.
So moved.
Move by Mansell, second.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Reader. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nades. Motion carries to adopt. Ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand thirteen. Is there any old business council would like to discuss at this time? Hearing none, new business. I'd like to go first. I have some recommendations from the, Marty for the fall rec program. Instructor Shana Gruia, Jane Greider, Jeremy Rattell, substitute instructor Gary Biggs, supervisors Nancy Trues, Bonnie Taylor, Jeremy Rattell, and substitute supervisor Joe Rattell. Entertained a motion to have them appointed.
So moved.
Move by Radka, second by Zoldan. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried. Is there any other new business? Mr. Mansell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make two motions. The first one would be, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise for the twenty thirteen road striping project.
Okay, everybody heard the motion from John. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Mr. Reader. Comments or questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried.
Okay, the second one is dealing with that Faust document, or the transfer of property from the government to the village is taking place. I would like to make a motion to authorize HZW Environmental Consultants LLC to perform an onsite inspection of the property at Compo Reserves that costs not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, everybody heard the motion from John. Is there a second to that motion?
Marked.
Second by Sullivan. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried. Is there any other new business before I make a motion for an executive session?
Yes.
Yes, Stanley.
One more motion to have Paul Dutton send a letter to the Blue Turbine of Ohio and Great Quinney, and to explain why we are only getting paid about thirty dollars a month for electric on those turbines. And I believe it was between three and five, seven hundred dollars a month. I mean.
Okay, there's a motion by Stanley on the floor. Is there a second to the motion? And your motion dies for the life of a second.
We just paid it to watch it.
Okay, is there any other new business? I would like to have an executive session with, uh, mayor, council, solicitor, uh, Mr. Mike Nelson from Lafarge. They have asked us to, uh, see if we would take another look at the agreement we have with them over the construction, demolition, debris, and Mr. Harrison. Uh, there will be no action taken after the executive session except to adjourn. Does that have a motion to that effect for the executive session?
Oh, moved.
Move by Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Radka. Comments? Bill, if we get that roll call for the executive session?
McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zoldan?
Yes.